Mr. Deacon, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Deacon, would you lead some prayer, please?
Yes. Father God, we come before you today in my name, Jesus, and just want to thank you for this beautiful day, thank you for everything that you're doing for us, even though sometimes it doesn't look like you're working, but you know that you're working. Father, we ask that you will have mercy upon the city of Montevista, that you will guide us into the right direction, that you will give us wisdom and understanding to make the right choices and protect everyone here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Can you give the roll call, please?
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Segola?
Here.
Counselor Ellathor?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
The forum is declared.
Any modifications tonight? Hold on, those are out here. Okay. Preril of consent agenda, minutes of writing meeting on September 19th, 2019, and reviewing preril of council paper.
I move to amend the consent agenda.
Did you say amend?
I amend.
I moved to approve. I apologize. I moved to approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any more discussion?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That just goes to show you all that you're just human.
Very human today.
Okay. So some comments and special presentations. Scheduled appearances in order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please follow appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So our first one will be holiday information by Jennifer Becker. Please stand up to the podium, put your name on the paper.
I do not get these in your packets, I apologize, but I'll give them to you now. And I have more of those. My name is Jennifer Becker, organizer of the holiday celebration. Actually, this is my second year. So I gave you guys, it's kind of something I put together just as my initial press release. I'm getting a much earlier start this year. Last year, I put it all together in about two and a half weeks, and I about went insane. So, starting a little earlier this year, I'm kind of tentatively going with the theme of Christmas vacation. I like that theme because it kind of just covers everything, just go nuts. On the form I put on there to channel your inner Clark Griswold and just light up Montevista. Some of the ideas that I've, everything's pretty much the same, doing the, of course, the bazaar at the Nazarene Church, that's put on by the chamber, still gonna do Santa, hot cocoa cookies, the parade, the tree lighting and the Christmas caroling, which I thought went over really well last year. Something I added this year, because of the theme, it seemed appropriate, is a house decorating contest. So I have forms that I'll have available for people to pick up from me, and I'll leave some with Unita at the time, and I'm gonna hit up some local businesses and get some little gift cards for people for first, second, and third prize. But I thought with the Christmas vacation, house decorating contest just seems appropriate. So, so yeah, I'm pretty much just here for a head nod, I guess, from like Forrest, Chief, and Rob, to make sure that I can, I'm sure I can count on you guys for what I need. I'll get in touch with you. I'm changing parade route this year, I'm keeping it shorter. Last year was, did not work out like I planned, so keeping it nice and short this year, but yeah, I'm excited. And I am looking for volunteers. We're having a really quick, real little meeting tonight, but I am looking for volunteers. Anyone that wants to help, please get ahold of me. I'm gonna need it.
I'll help.
Okay. I will keep that in mind. I will keep that in mind. We did it, I was gonna have the meeting tomorrow night, but we're going out of town, so I'm doing it tonight, but yeah, I will definitely keep it in mind, so. So anyway, any questions?
Sounds like fun.
Should be. I'm excited.
So is fun.
Yes, December 7th. Sorry, I didn't say that. Coincides with the Chamber's bazaar, so that way we get people downtown, we keep them downtown. They come downtown for the bazaar, they eat, they shop, parade lights, the whole works, so I'm excited. All right? Thank you. Off to my meeting.
Everybody, do you get all the heads on? Okay. Thank you. Brothers Keepers, for street dance, Mr. Deacon, would you stand up with him, young man?
I think most of you already know us. I'm Scott Deacon, and this is Zach Staggs, and we're Brothers Keepers Motorcycle Club. And the past two years, we put on Thunder in the Valley. The first year, we raised $2,500 for the Veterans Coalition, and this year, as we presented it in here, we raised 5,000 for the Veterans Coalition. And we've been brainstorming to make this bigger. I made some contacts with Drangle Harley Davidson, the owners, and they're in with us. And what I'm gonna propose to you guys is if we could have a street party, the main event will be at Sky High Park on the 13th of June, and I've already got the park rented. And what we'd like to do is have a street party downtown between First and Second on Adams. And I'm no longer affiliated with another car club, so I'm gonna bring all my passion to this, and I'm passionate about hot rods and that kind of stuff. And we've got another guy that is passionate about the pinstriping, so we're gonna bring both of those in, and I'm talking about bringing eight nitromethane dragsters. And I've got one myself, and I would like to have, like I said, a street party, have people down there gathering, donations for veterans, food, benefit all the businesses, and maybe start at like at 5:00 in the afternoon and maybe go to maybe 10:00. I'd like to fire those dragsters at like 8:00. We do, we used to do this at Early Iron. And then on Saturday, we're gonna have, I'm thinking probably about 10 pinstripers from all over the nation that come in, per Matt Beckner, and what we're gonna do is do a bunch of pinstriping, and then we're gonna have a pinstripe panel auction. They call it a sword distortion, and last year at Early Iron, we raised $6,000 for that. So I think this would be nice to put this money in the coffers for the veterans, and I'm hoping to quadruple the amount that we gave this year to the veterans. And I'm just here to see if you guys would be okay with having a party down there, and it's not gonna be a bunch of wild hooligans. You know, there will be some motorcyclists there and hot rodders. And I'm also gonna have a car show at Sky High Park on Saturday, a car and truck show. And I'm working on bringing in some specialty stuff, I'm not sure about it yet, military wise. I know Jimmy Claire is working on bringing Bring Me Home or Bring Me Home Huey. I think it's a veteran deal that there's a Huey for the Vietnam veterans, and it's dedicated, and he's working on bringing that. And I'm working also on trying to have a military jet flyover before we start a rally on Saturday at 10:00. And hopefully, I'm pretty passionate, and usually I can make some connections, and I'm always willing to have all the help I can get. And I'm saying a lot of "I," but I'm speaking for all the club members of the Brothers Keepers, which they couldn't make it tonight, but me and Zach just wanted to come and kind of put it out there to you guys, and we're gonna go to Coors and see if we can get some major sponsor from Coors. We're gonna do full-blown posters, just like you've seen for other events in the valley. And we're just gonna, we're going all out. I mean, this is, if my dream is to have 12,000 motorcycles in this town for the Thunder in the Valley and have, you know, race cars and all kinds of neat stuff, people just wanting to attend this, and the true benefit would be to our veterans. And you, can say anything?
No. I guess.
So, with that, you guys, I mean, you know, we'll just, we'll skedaddle, and you guys can let me know what you think about it. But, and I gotta tell you, I appreciate everyone of the city council, the city administration. You guys have been nothing but positive for me. Every year we do it, that we've done it, you guys are all in with me. And believe me, this first started, they wanted to do it in Alamosa, and I said, "No way." It's going to Monty. And you guys have come through to where even my naysayers are like, "Gosh, I'm glad we took it to Monty." So, you know. But thank all of you, and God bless all of you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a comment, or maybe it's a question.
I was, I'm amazed, sounds like a lot more than a street dance. So, look forward to it. Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's grown every year. You've done it, how many years, Scott?
This would be, this would be our third year this coming, coming year in 2020. That's why I'm trying to get ahead of it, so we got nine months, and I imagine I'll be back in here talking to you guys about some other things that maybe we're gonna try to do, but I really think that we can put Montevista on the map with Veteran Association, and there isn't any better thing in my mind that we could be recognized for.
That's great. Thank you for all you've done. I mean, that's huge.
It's a team effort, and believe me, there's a lot of passion. I mean, we do, I know a few of us that just really get fired up. Dale came in at the last one, we in Sky Park, and believe me, I wanna feel, he was there for the auction, and he was bidding on stuff, and I wanna feel that due to have people, you know, because if they can raise 6,000 down there, I'll bet we can raise 12 for the veterans, so.
Great.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
See you, guys. Sky real discount request? Can you present that?
I don't see it.
We take the budget down, I guess.
I have it on my computer here. It's Shelley Honeycutt, Shelby?
Shelby, right there.
Okay. Maybe Forrest.
I would do electronics right now. Thank you. So, you're all familiar with the great event that these sort of churches have been putting on for Halloween, on Halloween night, Rocktoberfest. Pretty, you know, it's grown over the past few years, they've had it at church, and then they've been having it at Sky High, and, you know, I would say it directly contributed to less trick-or-treaters, because it's a really good event for kids. So essentially, all they're asking for, as far as discounts go, is...
I saw they're a nonprofit.
Right. So they are a youth-serving nonprofit for the purposes of this discussion, so, you know, the maximum discount, you know, the discount request is 35% for youth-serving organizations, so that would bring their total to $923, which I can't see any reason not to recommend that to the council.
And that's 35%?
That'd be 35%.
It's basically the discount rates that are offered with...
That is the one that's offered, yes.
...nonprofit as well as youth-oriented.
Right. So they're basically asking for that, and those discounts have to be granted by the council, so that's why this is here tonight.
I would move, we need a motion, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I would move that we give the Rocktoberfest the 35% discount that is generally allowed for the rental of Sky High Park on October 31st.
I would second that. It's been moved and seconded to allow the Rocktoberfest to have the discount of 35% to the round cost of $923. Is there any more discussion? Unita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Ready, thank you. Thank you, Forrest.
Hi, Rob.
How's everybody? I'm here tonight to bring a memorandum of understanding in front of council in regards to the West SLV Transit Committee that I serve on. If you guys remember, we asked for some funding to pursue a CDOT grant to expand public transit to the western half of the San Luis Valley. That study was completed and submitted to CDOT. CDOT's currently evaluating the bus tang route to move or add a route that would cover basically 160 to Montevista, up to 85, and out that way, to pick up the other bus tang routes that wind up going to Denver, Pueblo, Colorado Springs, and Grand Junction. So what, while the study was going on, there was a public transit that formed from the Chaffee Shuttle, we call it the Eagle Line, and they service Del Norte, Center, Montevista, Sawatch, and Alamosa. They have a trip each week that goes towards Salida for medical, shopping, whatever you need, and then they also have another one that comes in reverse and heads to Alamosa for the same thing. It's been a really good program. Ridership has steadily increased since the line was first formed last year. This year, we're asking again for commitment from an MOU, all the original groups, Chaffee County, or not Chaffee, Chaffee Shuttle is providing the actual bus and the driver, their insurance, and all of that for this year, but from the counties and municipalities, they are asking for $1,750 for the annual fee to run the service. So that MOU is what's in front of you, and I can answer any questions, and if council would like, it is. I believe Jenny, it is in the budget this year, it's already been submitted?
What's that?
The 1,750 for the Eagle Line?
Who's budget?
Mine.
And it's in there?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is, so.
So it's not on top of, it's just, it's already rolled into that budget?
We already have it in there, so.
Is that what we had last year?
Yeah, it's the exact same. What it does, the CDOT provides a grant, and they expect a 50% match. What we agreed to as the SLV is that the Chaffee Shuttle needs to do half as far as fundraising, going to the different service groups and the different organizations that utilize the service, such as some of the medical providers and stuff, and that we, as counties and municipalities, would then pick up the other half. So, and it's, you know, it includes Sawatch, both the town and the county of Sawatch, Center, Del Norte, Rio Grande County, and ourselves. So, and the other group is trying to get Alamosa and the city of Alamosa on board. But since we were the original group, we agreed that we would come up with the same thing, or at least try to get it in front of our councils and make sure that you guys would agree with it. So the service, for anyone that doesn't know, runs on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Tuesday, it starts in Sawatch, and they come down through each of the communities and pick people up and take them to Salida. And while you're there, you can go to doctor's appointments, if you need to go to Walmart, they'll take you to Walmart. They'll also take individuals, if you wanna go downtown Salida and shop in the downtown, they'll drop you off in the downtown and pick you up in an hour or whatever timeframe you specify, and pick you up and bring you back out to the collection point, and then everybody heads home that afternoon. And the same thing happens the next day in reverse and goes towards Alamosa. So, it's a good service. It not only covers medical, but it covers shopping, and it provides a service to our residents that simply don't have the means or a car where they can get to some of the outside specialists for medical care.
It's not very expensive, is it?
It's not.
To ride?
No, it's $4 round trip.
Right. Not just silly.
So.
That's amazing.
So if council, I do need a motion to authorize the funds and to authorize the mayor to sign the MOU.
That was $1,700.
$1,750.
I move to approve the MOU as presented for the bus tang route, including the $1,750 matching fund, as well as authorizing the mayor to sign the MOU.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the MOU for the busting for $1,750. Mayor to sign. Any more discussion? Unita?
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you, council. Appreciate it. Thanks, Rob. I appreciate what you do on that stuff. Thank you. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Citizen comments? Jason?
Bet if I yell "fire," you'd take action at that same meeting.
You better get the door first, because I'm gonna run you over. Mark? Don't take yours at all, huh? Any of you kids have anything you wanna say? Okay. Quiet. Okay. So we go to ordinances. Ordinance 896, adopting the 2020 budget on first reading.
Good evening, yen mayor, councilors. So in this, in your packet this evening, you have ordinance number 896 on first reading, an ordinance adopting a budget and appropriating sums of money for the city of Montevista, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. There is a cover letter with this, which I will read part of for the record. I know that sounds exciting. But per section 53 of the Montevista Municipal Charter, the annual general city estimate for the 2020 fiscal year is encompassed in ordinance number 896 and the supporting documents. Compliance with the charter, the document commonly called the City of Montevista 2020 Budget, contains the city manager's annual budget setting forth in detail, an estimate of the probable expenditures of the city government for the next ensuing fiscal year for all purposes, and also an estimate of the probable income from fines, licenses, water rents, and all other sources of revenue of the city. So I'm gonna read that. That is the verbatim part, in order to be in compliance with the code and our charter. So what you have is the budget that we've had a couple workshops on with the council, and a number of meetings with staff, et cetera, to get to this point. I wanted to thank our finance director, Jennifer Sines, for all of her work on that, as well as all the department heads and people that are in sub-departments as well. Everybody understood my basic comment to them as we started to prepare this was that we are doing well, but well's not fantastic. There's a difference. We are seeing generally an increase in sales tax revenue, and it is trending upwards, which I think speaks to the growing economic vitality of our community. At the same time, you know, property taxes are pretty level. They're affected by the Gallagher Amendment, a lovely piece of state constitutional work that we're still saddled with. The assessors valuation for 2020, it looks like it went up a little bit, but that's a little bit, and you remember that's compared to Mills, so it's not a huge amount of additional revenue. So essentially, the budget that we presented to you and worked on with you, the general fund will end up in the black at the end of the year. That's our projection. We also project almost a million dollar general fund balance. And as we've talked with the council and our staff, that's important in cases of emergencies. It is a reasonable amount of funds to have in your general fund as a reserve for something beyond a rainy day. The work of the past council, and Jason was an excellent part of that, was fiscal conservative action. And so we've come back from where we were 11 years ago, which the city was not in very good financial shape at that time, to a point where we have a healthy fund balance. But being conservative, we're not looking to spend the general fund balance. Things happen that could be unanticipated, and, you know, we hope none of those things do, but we need to be able to deal with that. Really bad things, the feds will come and help you, but it takes a while. So we're being very conservative in that aspect, and I think the community should appreciate that. As well as the water and sewer funds, we're undertaking some necessary projects next year, including updating the water and sewer master plans, which have been done for a long time. And things have changed quite a bit. You know, regulatory things on wastewater in particular are a little daunting, and we're working to position ourselves, the city, so that we can deal with those changes as they come. We're in re permitting on our wastewater right now, which if you're an engineer is fun, I think. If you're not, it's definitely at least a headache. So we're in those processes right now. As we discussed with the council and staff, there are some other items which are not included in the budget, which we have basically said we will look at in the middle of the year, next year, and see where we stand. You know, we think our performance year-to-date, you know, revenues are exceed, you know, our expected revenues or budget revenues are exceeding our expenditures, but there's still a quarter left. We don't essentially close out the fiscal year till February, and we wanna have that all buttoned up and keep an eye on the revenue picture to see where we're at. And then there's some other items which we'll ask the council to reconsider when we do our mid-year budget amendments, which technically are in August. But we'll have some meetings in July to discuss those, and then the finance director will provide us with the numbers, and then the council can make some decisions on those. So the fact that any of those things are not included in this budget is not a comment of whether or not they are worthy. Most of them are worthy things, and there's been some impacts on some of the agencies that provide services to our citizens in the valley that have been kind of negative, and we realize that, and, you know, part of it has to do with support this provided the community, even in regards to police services. So, you know, we've got all that in mind, but we also, you know, really did not want to do any deficit spending this year. And I think we've achieved that with this budget. We are spending some fund balance in the water and sewer funds, particularly to undertake projects, and we had some unintended... And we had some unanticipated, interesting things pop up, particularly in wastewater. Not things that we can't handle, but things that cost money. So I don't know if you all have any particular questions on the budget this evening. But if you do, would be happy to field those.
No, I don't have any questions. I would like to thank you and staff for all the work Jenny and the department heads. Because you guys did, I think you did a very good job putting the budget together.
Thank you. Yes, sir, we would.
I move to approve ordinance eight nine six adopting the twenty twenty budget on first reading.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve twenty twenty budget proposal on first reading, ordinance eight nine six. No more discussion. Anita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you very much.
You still got, you got your other papers up there?
Ah, I don't really need the papers, but yeah. This part I remember. So this evening you have a request from Local Business Assist, Inc. in the form of Ron Douglas. To assign the lease of the ambulance bays to the Nazarene Church. The original request was that the Nazarene Church, you know, hopes, they do hope to purchase that building. But the lease mechanism does not allow for assignment of purchase rights. So you know, that was explained to Mr. Douglas and Nazarene Church and basically they were fine with that, so we had a request to sign. That lease. I had a good discussion with Counselor Lorenz today that I think, you know, she can talk about or I can, but basically. That the only thing that that would be a concern is a condition on the assignment of the lease, that there are no liens or encumbrances. On the property that would be inherited by the Nazarene Church in the case the lease is assigned. And that's certainly something that they can work out in their transfer documents they have, because they'll have to have, you know, their agreement to transfer that. And that'll have to be reviewed by the city attorney. But barring that, if it's the council's pleasure, you could vote to with those conditions. Approve this transfer of the lease. And the transfer request is only to the Nazarene Church, not to any other particular assignee.
The Nazarene Church, at least, is compliant, right?
Yes, I mean, at the, at the time when that building, when that building was leased to LBA, it was vacant. And the Nazarene Church has been involved in making improvements to the ambulance bays and obviously it's quite convenient to their store. And so they definitely have a vested interest in the improvements there.
And they're good with the conditions of the lease transfer? They're okay with all that? Not being able to purchase it?
Well, I believe that they subsequently would request from the city, because they will then hold the lease, that they would then subsequently request the city. And that's a separate thing, but they would request the city sell that to them. The process that we have now, after some work by our city attorney. Is that they could request that and the city would need to hold a public hearing in that regards. And pass an ordinance authorizing that sale. So you know, there's still a process there, but I fully anticipate that that is exactly what they want to do. Sure?
I'm here representing.
Come on up.
My name's Mike, by the way. I've only been in town for two months, but so I'm not sure how I quite made it to the podium yet, but that's okay. I think everybody's out of town right now. Just a small, just a small clerical detail is I think that the lease is being transferred to the Nazarene thrift store as a separate entity rather than directly to the church. And then, so we have the signed agreement from Ron to transfer the lease. She did mention the same thing. She wanted to just make sure that there weren't any unpaid bills if, if it is approved to transfer the lease. And then I think there is a separate, just an initial agreement to purchase as well.
Well, there's an initial offer to purchase, which is exactly the same offer that was tendered before. But the process is that the lease needs to be assigned before that can actually be.
Okay.
Acknowledged and acted on by the council.
Okay. Do you have any questions for me? It's nice you should come by and look at the building. It's a lot different than I think that it was. And Barb also wanted to point out that it will help you with increasing sales tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Signing sheet disappeared, so.
What's that?
So the signing sheet disappeared, but. No, he didn't take it. It was not here when I came up, so maybe I, maybe I took it last time I was up here.
So is this just a head on? Or is this an actual?
No, you would have to vote.
Kathy, do you have any more to add to that, to what you guys talked about?
No, just that it was, I think it's important that there are no liens or other expenses that will be transferred. To the Nazarene thrift store from the previous tenant.
Did I steal it? There we go. Perfect.
That's my own comment. So I move to transfer the lease of the ambulance bays from LBA to the Nazarene thrift store. With, without transferring any leases or financial encumbrances from the previous leaser.
And just to correct that, liens?
Liens. Liens or encumbrances.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the transfer of the lease. Kathy said? Is there any more discussion? Without, no liens or encumbrances on the property to the Nazarene thrift store? Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Staff reports, Forrest.
Evening, mayor, councillors. Okay, just a few things. Y'all might have noticed walking up here that we have a new sidewalk entry to the front of the building. And the sidewalk extends down and then there's a T to where the handicapped accessible parking spots are. So the apron of the asphalt and the concrete there was fixed, as well as the ramp up. The nice thing about that is we had a CONDRG DOLA mini grant on that, so. About four thousand dollars of the total project cost will be reimbursed to the city and we've already submitted all that and you know, they're just waiting for the check. So that's good. That's a multi-phase project. Yet on the mini grants basically work like. They have a ten thousand dollar project cap. So, excuse me, next year. If you've walked the concrete to the east of there. It is incredibly spalled and deteriorated and somewhat bad to the west, but the east part's really bad down towards the police department. So next fiscal year, we will tear that out and replace that with new sidewalks. So you know, partially necessary for ADA compliance. If you notice, not only the front of the building has additional security features, but it is ADA compliant. So that kind of solves that compliance issue that we was kind of nagging at us. We did not have any complaints on that, but better to be proactive in that case. The one sales tax ballot question and pro statement have been properly submitted to the county. We did that in conjunction with our city clerk. And also our pro bono attorneys from Kootak Rock that worked on the table question to make sure that it was. Correct and followed state law as well as the pro con statements. So we completed those, sent them over to them and then they actually both emailed them and sent them FedEx to the county in a timely fashion, so. That is on the ballot. And you're all aware of that, but it is officially on there. We're still working, the URA is still working on the closing for the one seventeen Adams property. In a perfect world, that will probably close next Tuesday. So we're really excited about that project and we'll probably get a press release and stuff together after that gets closed. And then in addition to one seventeen Adams, just a little bit more URA things. So the URA is in negotiations to purchase two more houses, which are demolition properties. I think those are going really well. So in November, we plan to demolish five houses in the community that are highly dilapidated. And so not only would the houses be, the final step is the environmental assessments. Most of which is done, but the onsite inspector that looks for hazmat and that kind of stuff will be here next Thursday. And assuming those get cleared, we'll file with the state for the demolition permits and then in November. Rob's crews, in a perfectly convenient time, will be able to take those down. And we will also clean up the lots at the same time. Now what will happen with those lots afterwards, we're waiting to see what Division Housing does with their new rural housing initiative. And we should know that by February, we're also working with a couple of local partners on getting some new housing there. But at the very least, we eliminate five dilapidated buildings. And that'll help to clean up the community as well as the yard. So it's been a long road for the URA to get there, but we're finally getting there. And I went to a conference for URAs that was put on by Downtown Colorado, Inc. in Montrose. I'm thinking that was a week ago, might have been two weeks ago at this point. And what was really interesting, there are a lot of URAs there, there are people that are starting URAs. And you know, we discussed our mains blight program, but you know, the one seventeen Adams project garnered a lot of attention from some of these other folks. They're like, how did you make that work? There are some other URAs, the one in Montrose is doing some amazing stuff that I'd like to dig into a little bit more, but. You know, even though it's been a slow process for our URA here, because we were first with this program with CDBG funds. It started to bear fruit and so it's actually pretty exciting. It's been a long haul for the commissioners that have been appointed to that, but they've stuck with it, so. I'm very happy to report that we've actually made some solid project, process, yeah, sorry, progress. And you know, by December, we will have, you know, cleaned up five lots in the city. So pretty exciting and that is all I have this evening unless you have any questions.
Do you have the address of those properties?
I can get those to you. I don't have them like right in front of me, but yeah.
Some of it is kind of exciting, something that I've been researching lately and talked to in the Department of Housing and the RPE function here recently. Tremendous amount of funds being made available over the next several years. As well as some innovations that CML has reported on. Specifically some of what's going on and I think a lot of it centered around Durango. And they're just, I just wanted to mention that it's, it's encouraging, not that we're just getting things cleaned up. But if there's going to be some property available, there's some innovative ideas for housing that we can look into and I'm excited about.
Thank you. You know, I love housing stuff, so. Yeah, Durango has some very innovative things they're doing. They're just starting their URA though. So that's kind of interesting. But I think the Montrose model is really cool from an economic development standpoint. So I'm going to get some more details on actually how they put some boots on the ground on some stuff and. Hopefully work with our URA to see if we can do that. We have a filed plan and you have to, you know, do those. We updated it particularly for this program, but we opened the door with it to do some other things, so. Like one seventeen Adams. So I think we can replicate that. We're, you know, really excited that, you know, we've made a difference in it or making a difference in the downtown business. There'll be a new business in there from a building that was kind of a lost cause.
I know that's important, but I do.
Yeah, I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, that one will be neat. All right, thank you.
Mayor? I believe, did we skip over M?
I wonder if we did.
I think we did. Oh. Excuse me. It was cut off my page on my computer.
Well, you all know how much I love to get up in front of everybody and talk, so. You can't miss it because I need the practice, right? Good evening. It's okay, I'm a forgettable person, so. All right, tonight I would like to present to you the July thirty first financials. As of July thirty first, fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year had lapsed. We continue to see our revenues come in above what we have budgeted for. We're at seventy-one percent or just a little over two point two million in revenues. The largest source of that still remains the tax revenue. In regards to that, I'm going to kind of just skip around a little bit tonight and hope I don't lose my place. But our tax revenue is up, as Forrest alluded to, with the sales tax. The other thing that we have to keep in mind, once we reach this point in the year. We've collected ninety-seven percent of our property taxes. So we're not, you know, we see that influx of revenue at the beginning of the year and it's, it is part of our budget. It's not a huge part of it, but we will see that taper off. So as we go through the rest of this year, we're going to see our expenditures probably catch up with our revenues. Another piece of that is July was the first month that we implemented the new wage scale. And one pay cycle is reflected in July. So I think as we kind of go through the end of the year, we'll, we'll start to see the expenditures catch up. I don't think they'll, I, I know they're not going to exceed them. But we'll see that kind of level out, so. As of the month end, cash in the main checking account for the general fund was four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And the total unrestricted cash assets for the general fund is a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. The general fund revenues exceeded expenditures in July of by five hundred and five thousand dollars for the year. Which brought our fund balance in for the general fund at one point three million dollars, almost one point four. So as Forrest said, I think we will probably reach that one million mark and be able to maintain that one million mark by the end of this year. We're hopeful, we're crossing our fingers, so. Couple other things in regards to the general fund. The fund balance, we have the table that's restricted of the hundred and three thousand dollars. I talked to you about the property taxes and then the wage, the wage scale. But we've worked really closely, Forrest and I both have worked really closely with our department heads to try to, to watch our expenditures this year. So I want to thank all the department heads. Something else that we worked on here in July, August, September was with Casell, which is our accounting software. They had a platform module in there that allows me to give access to our department heads so that they can see their budget. As well as where they are with their expenditures in basically live time. So as long as it's posted in Casell, they can see it, so it gives them a pretty good idea of where they're at in the year. So that's something that we just kind of got up and running and IT helped me with that, so thank you, IT. For the water fund, the revenue is coming in at fifty-five percent of the budget or close to five hundred thousand dollars, with the majority of that being from charges for services. Expenditures at the month end in water fund were at forty-three percent of the approved budget or a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. So the unrestricted cash for the water fund is nine hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And water fund's portion of that in the main checking account is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So water fund's doing good as far as their cash balances as well. In the sewer fund, revenues are at seventy-eight percent of the approved budget, which is a little over seven hundred thousand dollars as well. And again, the majority of that's from charges for services. Expenditures totaled, we're at thirty-four percent, we're totaled five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. In the sewer fund, we're seeing that revenues are coming in over expenditures as well. As of July, it was a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So the fund balance in the sewer fund is a little over four point three million dollars. So again, all of our funds, our major funds are, are very healthy. We're doing good at building those, those reserves up. those, those reserves up that we need to have. So the other thing that I'd like to make note of on the financials is the mid-year amendments are reflected in these financials, so they're added into the budget. Any questions? All right. You could have skipped me.
Sorry, Julie. Thank you. Thanks, Kathy. Nika? Here comes the superhero right here.
I feel like one today, it's been exciting. I really don't have, it's gonna be quick, I don't have anything really to report for you guys. Numbers have been between 65 and 70 every day after school, till about 5:30. Kids are staying with us even later, we're wondering where parents are. Like 5 till 6, we still have like 45 in the building, but I think we're kind of back in our after-school groove, behavior's been way more manageable. I'm just trying to catch up in the office. I didn't have much for you, but I figured since I skip pretty much every summer and don't get to see you, that I would just come say hi, even if I didn't have anything to say, so. Don't know if anyone has any questions, but that's really all I have for you. I just have kids and noise, so not much to talk about.
Thanksgiving is coming.
Yes, Thanksgiving is coming up. I don't want to think about it, because with the school district changing their Thanksgiving break, I'm trying to figure out what to do for ours. We were, we only had kids for two, we had kids two days after school during that week, and then one full day before Thanksgiving. Well, now they have a full Thanksgiving break, so I'm trying to figure out how to manage three full days during Thanksgiving break, and how to work staff schedules so they still have time to spend with family and can enjoy the break. We really enjoyed kids for that, three hours for two days, and then the one full day, three full days before we're ready for full days again, it's gonna be fun. Trying to convince staff it's gonna be so much fun. I will be looking forward to doing the Thanksgiving feast again, like we have done every year. We're just trying to figure out what schedule's gonna work best. Yeah, thank you for pushing me ahead a whole month, but...
Let us know if we can help.
Okay, I will. I'm just catching up from summer. I just barely got August attendance taken care of, and we're already at the end of September, but I'm almost fully caught up, so I will let you know.
Any news on the bus situation?
Uh, no. The mini bus is running.
Running?
Yes, we got that one going, but nothing on the big bus. I actually haven't bothered Patrick with it, because he's been kind of busy back and forth, and we don't have any field trips planned, so I figured I would give him a little bit of time to catch up on everything else he has to do before I start planning anything. Plus the bus, we can't really run it during the winter, we don't have a heater in it, and we tried it one year just driving to Alamosa for an Adams State basketball game, and we froze the entire drive. My bus driver was like scraping the window on the ride back, it was very unsafe, so we won't take field trips in the winters ever again. Yeah, but I was told that I needed to chat with you because you stopped by and I wasn't in the office, so I will get with you about the bus situation.
Yeah, start working on some ideas, there are ideas at this point, but, yeah, we need to do something.
Yeah.
I don't have a question for you, but I was out in the community and been over here with conversation, but you were, you and the kids connection staff and your program is very highly recognized in the area, so thank you.
That's good to hear, thank you for that feedback.
Very, very complimented on what you guys do.
Awesome. I love to hear it. Sometimes it doesn't feel that way, because we feel like we're failing many, many, many ways, but just one compliment, even if it's one kid. That's awesome.
That was good.
Thank you for letting me know, I will let my staff know. It was really my staff, honestly.
They praised you guys, your program. Being very, very good, so.
Sweet. Thank you.
Thank you for it.
Thank you.
Have you missed anything? Council committee, city commission, and council reports.
The 1% project fund, just be informative, you know, learn about it, educate yourself on it. It's very important, I believe, for the future of our city here. We had a podcast today, Mayor and myself and Nita here, so eventually that'll be out, so we can share it, and we can let people listen to that. So just want to encourage everybody to, if you're not a registered voter, to get registered, so you can help make a difference.
Well, I don't really have anything, but I'm glad you mentioned that, about the ability to help several people get registered. I've been in some complicated states, California, Texas, and it is so simple in Colorado. It's basically, it's more complicated to sign up for Facebook than it is to get registered as voters. So if you're 18 and anywhere's beyond that, I didn't mean to look at you, so, look into that, it's a simple site on the colorado.gov. Pretty sure that's what it is, it's pretty simple to find, pretty simple to do, but by all means, look into getting that now, it's an important thing, which seems to be missed sometimes.
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
Had a really good dinner with your new superintendent, or breakfast, excuse me, and Forrest today, and it's always informative to see what's going on in the school district and see what, their perspective. And so just so you guys know that we do get in touch with what goes on in the school system, and I'm really glad to see all you guys here. With the one cent tax initiative, I've been in and out of several businesses, just in my daily travel, not going there specifically for that purpose, but have lots of questions, and if I don't know the answer, because I don't always, I refer him to Forrest, I don't know if you've gotten any phone calls?
One.
Yeah, but I have, you know, people ask lots of questions downtown, and I don't always know the answers, but there's lots of people out there talking about it, it's a buzz. So if you have the opportunity to talk about it, learn about it first, and then visit with people about it. I think it's a really important thing for this town to sort of move forward and have some better, you know, fix our roads and do some of the things that we have needed to have done for a long time. So that's what I've been doing.
Yesterday was National Coffee with Cop, and I thought that went over really well. It was well attended, and there was lots of good conversation, and so I wanted to thank Chief and the department for doing that, and I believe that it was SLV did a live broadcast with that, so that was kind of new and different and fun, so that was exciting. And Crime Stoppers was instrumental in helping solve one of the cases that the police department was handling, so, you know, good thing for Crime Stoppers, and Chief Rosecrans has been instrumental in reorganizing that. They're also doing a fundraiser, and the gentleman sitting in the back mark has been instrumental in that fundraiser, so if anybody's interested in that, they can talk to him about how they can participate and raise money for Crime Stoppers.
You almost... Our famed Bonavista High School band at the competition out in Grand Junction took first place, and had the privilege of driving them out there and back, and they're a great bunch, but I wanted to make sure that the community was aware of that. We've got regionals coming up in November, but the band and all the athletic activities have always been good through Bonavista, we've still not been able to track, but that was pretty powerful that they took first place, so.
Go Pirates! Taxing the one cent tax, that's, I'm with Victor, everybody up here, it's very important for this community. It's not much, but it will benefit us greatly with how it's all laid out, and going with the Skyhead Park complex and trying to get all this stuff in motion, it's gonna be a very, very important part of that, so you sure to vote? You sure agree to that question very well, and vote positive on it? Other than that, I want to thank the city and all the staff for what they do. You guys have done a fantastic job with the city. I see it every day, Rob, your crew's amazing, and Chief, your guys have been really good. And don't forget, with Kathy saying about Coffee with Cop and Crime Stoppers, if you see something, say something. There's been some stuff going on, so pay attention to what's going on. I see some new faces here at the meeting, and I thank you for being here tonight, with respect, please, great to see faces here. I'd rather see you sitting here in these chairs than the stuff I see on Facebook, so thank you guys for being here. With that being said, I have nothing more, so we will adjourn the meeting until October 17th, 6 p.m.